Let's chat. So call the word of the meeting, July 5th, 4:30. At the regular meeting, that's June 21st. If you had a chance to read.
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
I think I can make a motion because I lost connection.
Oh, yeah, you left. I'll second the motion. All those in favor?
I'll stand.
Local traffic authority, we have a couple of things. Three things. One, I wanted to talk about the last meeting, but we weren't all here and it's a little hard to do it over the internet. I had reached out to DOT about a school zone for James Morris School. And the guy came back with some options here. One is just basically some signs that both ends of the school zone, letting people know. Here's the speed, school zone ahead, maybe fines doubled. Another option is kind of like what Thomaston Black Rock has down there with the flashing lights during the time. That option costs the town for the cost of the signs and the installation, although we could probably do the installation. And the upkeep of the batteries, or if there's batteries, or if it needs to be powered. And then there's the option of kind of both of those put together. I could not get I reached out to the cog to do a survey of other towns that had these options in place, and I couldn't get cost of actual those speed signs or the flashing lights and everything. So I don't know what it would be for us. I imagine at least up to $10,000 because these are flashing lights and all that. The first option is basic signs, which the DOT would take care of. We could do that and see how it works.
Yeah, I think we should start there, right? And then if it doesn't slow people down, then we'll investigate further.
Go forward from there. I'll get back to DOT and just, well, actually, we should.
I mean, we should have signed here a long time ago.
Yeah, well, I mean, it should be up. It's a school zone, doesn't it, at some point? Doesn't it?
I know there's a sign for the crosswalk.
That's the only one I saw.
I mean, you're approaching an intersection. You should not be flying, but.
So is there a motion to possibly do the first option, which is school zone ahead finds doubled signing as well as the end school zone signing?
Yeah, I'm gonna cut motion.
And I'll second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Yeah, I'll reach out to them, try to get that done. Another thing, I did have another meeting with state DOT engineers regarding the intersection here, 10961. Do you have that in your packet? Yes. So what they would be looking to do is shave off the corner of the town park. And then shave off some of the corner across the street here to get a little bit better alignment of the two in the intersection there. There's also an issue with pedestrian traffic. And they kind of put in there some sidewalks. I'm not a huge fan of a lot of sidewalks. Especially the redundancy of having a sidewalk in front of the town hall, plus the one behind the stone wall, you know, between the stone wall and the town hall. I don't see the purpose. I would make the recommendation to them is utilize the town hall sidewalk and put in a spur going out to the crosswalk. On each side of our, the sign in front of the town hall. So you have one going out to the south towards the park. And one spur going out to the right towards the west towards Skelton's property. And then I'm not sure about the use of a sidewalk going all the way down in front of Richard Skelton's house either.
Can we? I mean, I think, and we can't make this intersection any worse. So that's whatever. I think this is probably good, but can we request it without sidewalks?
I'm not sure. Well, yeah, we can do that. I'm not sure if it will go forward. Because they're trying to capture two different things. Fixing the intersection, which is a daily hazard. Laurel and I can sit there and count the beeps. And also making some pedestrian safety issues a little bit better.
And the crosswalks help.
Crosswalks, limited sidewalks, I would say, and you know.
I would say, because you know, you know, Tom, we're starting to lose our our charm in the nice little city of, you know, town of Morris here. You know, we're talking sidewalks, we're talking about flashing signs.
I don't think sidewalks necessarily minimize charm. I think they're ugly.
Well, you drive through.
People walk through, yeah.
You drive through Bethlehem.
It looks awful. I agree.
It looks awful.
But making this in this intersection killed the charm of the center of town. So if we can bring it back together a little bit, I think the sidewalks would be the least of our.
I would probably have to ask a study of how many people got hit, pedestrians got hit in the center of town.
They'll already say that there's not, there's very little crash data here to even move forward with the realignment, but they visited the site and saw that there is definitely an issue.
A realignment, I definitely agree with you. Anything to improve that, yes.
I would think if we can utilize the sidewalks we currently have.
Right.
Don't add any on this side of the road, nothing on Memorial Park side of the road.
On Richard's side of the road.
Possibly from the corner to Poppy's driveway. To get people to that.
Go across.
It's a maintenance issue too for us.
For the town.
I mean, there are, there's, yeah.
Now, how does that affect the Skelton property?
That's all state right away.
Okay.
See the white line? It's kind of hard to see. It's white with a long dash and two short dashes.
It was right in front of his house.
Goes right in front of his house.
Oh, yeah.
That's, that's the Eastman line.
Okay.
And they have a lot of the town park right there. Oh, yeah. And they had also, in order to prove the sight line coming from the west on 109 into the center of town. They have to lower the grade approaching the intersection. So you'll see those three driveways, the two for Steve Cook's property, the post offices, one for Poppy's. Those would have to, they would drop down from the parking lot to the road a little bit more to improve the grade in the sight line. And same, I think they had to do something at James Morris School also. There's gonna be, we're gonna put it up on the site. This is just a conceptual idea. I think we need to get feedback to DOT soon and just say, hey, I think we kind of all agree, the less, the better with sidewalks. And see where they can go from there.
Need a motion to move forward with it or?
Just whatever.
I don't think.
I'll get back to them and if they want something right, then we'll do next meeting. Because I, I feel the same way. I'm not a big, I tell them, we roll up the sidewalks, turn off lights, 11 o'clock, you know, let's go to bed. It's a little more.
I just look at Bethlehem, you know, and I saw the concept that they tried to do. It just looked horrible.
It was.
It really does. And then I've seen the nightmare of keeping it shovel in the winter and ice and.
Yeah.
It's all town responsibility now.
Okay, and third on the list for local traffic authority, Ron Schaefer, I believe he's on the line here. He had just sent me something today, which I can't pull up on here. I did send it to you on your phone. Looking for kind of a walking district on Burgess Road. Trying to improve, I guess, safety, you know, for people who are walking or riding their bikes or whatever down, up and down Burgess Road. And it looks like proposing kind of like Lake Warmog where they have Lake It Slow. Put up some signs for awareness for people. As far as lowering the speed limit, I can check with DOT if it'll allow a slower speed limit there.
Are we looking at doing this in other roads too, or?
This is the only one that was brought forward today.
I mean, we're gonna start picking, you know, and I, I agree with Ron.
Me too.
We, we have to look at the whole town now.
We're gonna order signs. We should, as Benton Road certainly is walkers and people are flying. Probably the people on the straight turnpike feel the same.
And Benton Road is a lot of walkers.
There's a lot of walkers.
Lot of walkers there. Even if it. There's a lot of walkers that park down by across from the white barn and walk up there. So if we're gonna start looking at signs, we should look at a picture of the town of what, what are important roads.
Do you do, do we, does the town sponsor yard signs? Available throughout the town for people to post like the Lake It Slow?
Well, if we're thinking about rural charm, I think that's probably better than yellow signs on all of our town roads that already have signs.
You're right. You're absolutely.
I mean, Todd Hill, people walk on Todd Hill, people, you know, Canyon, people walk all over the place.
They walk all over the place. Yeah, that's what people want to do. They want to get out and walk their dogs.
I don't know. I, I don't know how you designate just one road. Probably wouldn't let my kid walk on Burgess Road though. They were little.
Jump in with your thoughts.
Yeah. Hi, hi, everyone. Thanks. Um, yeah, I mean, yeah, town wide is a thing. I guess some, some, some roads are designated as primary routes or secondary routes. Maybe those, you know, DOT has more authority or those are roads that we can't really slow down, but quote unquote, local roads are ones that really aren't supposed to be through traffic and those are ones that maybe could be considered for the town to lower somehow or put these signs up or whatever. Rather than, you know, every street, I mean, I think some are like West Morris would be great to slow down, but that's sort of a through street. You know, and you have snow routes and things like that. I guess those need to stay at their. So it's it's more the local, whatever is considered like local roads and then also town people's motivation to contact you guys. Like myself, I guess, in certain roads, once maybe they see Burgess, they'll be like, hey, let's try this on our road and so on. I don't know. Um. That's my sort of two cents.
Yeah, the, I think you forwarded a flyer from Lake Warmog.
Yeah.
And then the flyer shows a sign up on a post like it's a town sign. I did not view any of those down at Lake Warmog this last Sunday or Monday.
Uh huh.
They were, they were all the yard signs, you know what I mean? Like the
Yeah.
Fire thing in the ground.
Yeah. Those are, those, I mean, that would be cool, but you know, then I mean, it's in the winter, everyone's got to pull them up, put them back in. Which is fine, but yeah, I mean, I don't know. I understand, like, having a big yellow sign at the top and the bottom of the street and like signage posted year round in yellow signs does take away from that. You know, the nice charm kind of thing. And the little yard signs, I guess, could be effective.
I, I just, I mean, speeding is just a problem all over and Tom and I live on state roads and it's like 61 is like a racetrack. So I don't think people look at street signs. I think people will be more likely to look at yard signs, honestly.
I wonder if.
They don't look at speed limit signs. What are they gonna do?
If there's a neighborhood. Yeah, there's a neighborhood that's interested too. Maybe they could form a neighborhood association and make this the project of theirs.
Right.
For their yards.
The other thing was just even, I mean, if it did have one of these sort of yellow signs like walking district, it's have a, yeah, a white line across the street too. To delineate it and to get people to like to define it almost like it's not a stop sign, but a slowdown section, you know? And then also going forward is the idea of trying to get a town, town police officer, what's it called? A
Resident State Trooper.
Resident State Trooper, if we ever get one, I mean, in these areas to once every three months sit at the corner and, you know, get people that are speeding to give them warnings and stuff. I think in those two combinations over time, you'd have some decent little areas where people feel comfortable walking on their own streets.
I'll check with the.
It's a start is kind of what I'm getting at.
I'll check with DOT, see what's allowed. I know they have certain things that they do allow and they don't. So even though they're local roads, they still have some control and need their approval.
Yeah. Yeah, I guess first thing would be great to get it down to 25 because then maybe people, people will be going 35 instead of 45. I mean, I even see like the, the bus drivers go by a little fast and like the town, you know, dump truck going by fast. It's, it's just, they gotta do the speed limit. So getting it lower, they'll go a little slower and the signage will just have them aware of of, oh, I see someone up ahead. I'm gonna slow down even more because I know everyone wants me to slow down. It's, it's sort of like an awareness thing.
Okay. Yeah, I know on Sean Meadow, we tried to do a 20 mile an hour speed limit, I think. And DOT said, no, we can't do that. Why not? I mean, you drive that road at 20, it's more than fast enough.
Right.
You know, it's a, it's a cul-de-sac, pretty almost a dead end. And it was reasonable speed, but they had their rules. But I think they're starting to modify those rules now that they can lower the speed limits. So I'll check with them for the next meeting.
Okay. And is there anything I can do on my end? Like, get it? I mean, when you said association, I don't know about that, but would it help to have like everyone in the streets sign a petition or something, or just to show interest? And sort of strength in the idea for this.
Be opposed to having like the, the town sponsor, you know, drive slow signs or something. Yard signs. I just think we're gonna have walking districts and every town road is gonna get a little.
Yeah. So the sign idea is good. Is it something that the people would purchase to put on their yard or it's free or how it's?
Come up with a, we'll come up with a some sort of design and.
Yeah, I think the design is, would be very key in this because, you know, as far as the look and aesthetic, there is a Litchfield one that I, I'll send as well, that says something like, we love Litchfield, like, you know, Litchfield, love, drive slow with like, you know, the silhouette of a kid and a mother walking kind of thing. And yeah, I mean, I think the look of it would be key so that it's uniform and just looks nice. Yeah.
Yeah.
I'd be happy to take a pass at something and we can talk about our next meeting. If we're gonna do it, it'd be nice to have it for back to school.
Well, we, we should get some cost, what's involved in it.
Yeah.
Look into that yard signs.
Yard signs, to see what it's gonna cost and and see how many people are really gonna get involved with the program.
Yeah.
I mean, you can, you can offer all this out, but if nobody wants to put a yard sign on the yard.
I think people will put them out.
I mean.
I've seen a few over on North Shore Road now too.
Yeah.
I just noticed them today. All right. Yeah, because that's quite a walk. Yeah, we'll do what we can for our next meeting.
Thank, thank you, guys. Tom, real quick, I just sent you an email. Is it possible for me to get a copy of this DOT Route 109 61 intersection proposal you guys were looking at?
Yeah, we're gonna get that up on the website. Is it part of the agenda right now?
No, but I can put it on the website tomorrow.
Yeah, but we have to make sure that people realize this is just a concept. It's not something written in stone. There'll be feedback. There'll be a hearing for people to have their input. Thanks, Ron.
All right, I'm gonna log out. Thanks, guys. Bye.
All right, thank you.
Physical policies and procedures. This was a recommendation from our treasurer. Do I have a copy? Were you able to go through that at all?
I had a chance, we'll throw it.
Forgot all about it, but yes.
You can look at this one. There's one on page 11, number two. Should read, it should read expenses in excess of 500. And the language, the last sentence, the first selectmen's office has the right to waive the need of a purchase or that just mirrors language throughout the document. The purchase order document.
But I think it says that in there anyway. Does it say?
Yeah, but this, I think it, it just kind of codifies it. So it's all consistent throughout the document.
Yeah, but what, what that's saying is that the first selectman can waive any, any purchase order.
The need, it has the right to waive the need for a purchase order.
Right. And I, I don't think that's right. I, I think what you have is a category in there for short items or emergency.
Well, this is the way it's written, purchase order policy. And that's, so this will mirror the purchase order policy. It's the way we've been doing it for years.
It's already written that way. Yeah.
Because there's stuff that comes in and it's like, well, we gotta do it, order it now.
Yeah, but why? Why?
Just perhaps price increases, perhaps someone's not here to sign, you know, whatever it is. This is daily business in the town hall. Unless you're here living it, I know it's hard to understand.
It's, it's hard for me to understand because when I, I worked for a major company, everything was purchase order. And that's how we did business. And it was a way of tracking stuff that, especially for departments.
Yeah, we don't waive many purchase orders. A lot of times if it's a service item that we do all the time. A maintenance item, we don't do a purchase order. But every once in a while, it does come up and just need that option. Otherwise, you know, you could sit around without a generator for a week and, oh, well. We don't have power in town hall. Couldn't sign a purchase order.
That's, that's emergency situation.
Well, then you need the writing and the policy to allow you to do that.
I just, I just said, did we run this by the board of finance?
No, it goes to board of selectmen first. They get to review it afterwards.
After we vote, yes or no?
Yeah.
Okay.
And the second one was page 25. And again, this kind of aligns with what we were doing and have been doing. Town budgets past a departmental budget basis. And they were cutting step line item. And it was crossing out the board of finance approvals needed for departments, boards or commissions which overspend a specific line item. If it is covered within the original budgeted appropriation for the department. And then a departmental budget, that's not required, although we send all over overages to the board of finance for their approval for line item transfers. So.
But they should they should be notified.
They are monthly.
Of a, a line item that is going to go over.
We do that.
What's that doing in the policy?
This is taken, asking for their approval if they need to, if they go over.
The board of finance has to approve it.
Well, that's what it says here now. We're taking rid of that. They don't need to approve a line item overage in a budget. It's a departmental overage is where they need approval for.
Well, I, I, I always thought that they, they approved it.
No, we, we give them reports every month.
Yes.
And if we know something's going over, I send them an email letting them know that this is looking like it's gonna go over and here's why. So they're, they're aware of it for their meetings. And I think the last one was adding some accounts to this.
Right.
Which are the last five. He has one spare, it looks like, and it returns to Memorial Park. That's the money that, when Reggie Harrison left. He had that fund for the engraving across the street in Memorial Park. We need to have a place to keep that because we will need it. Obviously, ARPA came up. Morris Fire Pension is a new one. And then off budget grants, these grants that come in that really not part of the budget, needs a line item for those. It makes accounting a lot easier and more transparent, clear for everybody, especially for the auditor. But those were the three things that Rick had come up with.
Make a motion to approve the changes.
I'm not gonna approve. I like the last item, unfortunately. I think that's necessary, but the other ones, I don't like making a motion to approve something without the board of, you know, then telling the board of finance, we approved something. So I'm gonna.
Well, yeah, I understand your concern.
Okay.
We created these.
Yeah, that's fine.
And as a board of selectmen, and we do modify them every time to time.
Okay.
All those in favor? I pose. Thank you. Eight for town meeting for the Region 20 Board of Education. Candidates. Commit July 19th, 7 o'clock. Tom Ferk is good with that. Eileen, Republican registrar, she's good. Hopefully we can get either Larry or Carrie here for the Democrat registrar because this will be a paper ballot vote.
Okay. Is that mandatory?
It's a ballot vote. Yeah. Well, it's not mandatory, but I believe this is the way we talked through our town attorney today. And he goes, if you're gonna do this, you get all your nominations from the floor. You put them on a ballot. And we can print it off real quick. Maybe 40 of them, whatever we need for a town meeting. And come down and the people here are instructed, they have to be elector of the town. They can't be just the taxpayer. They have to be actually elector of the town to vote. And you vote for three. And if there's a tie, you do a runoff between those two candidates. You don't revote anything and anyone else. You just revote that tie between those two candidates. And we end up with three. They'll serve until July 1st of 2023. The new candidates for that next term, which is to be determined by the Board of R20. They'll determine the terms moving after, forward after that. So every May, we'll probably be voting for, like we currently do for more board of members.
Every year?
It depends on how they set the terms. It depends what Litchfield currently, their board of members go to municipal elections. Warren Morrison Goshen, I'll do it at town meeting. So we're gonna have to try to figure that out.
Okay.
But, uh, yeah, it'll be interesting. Anyone can serve. Current board of members on Region 6 can get voted out to Region 20 and serve both if they so decide. There's no office in town that you can't serve from beyond currently and then be on the Region 20 Board of Ed. I had Mike look at all the statutes, just be sure. And, uh, that should do it.
All right.
And then 10 days after this meeting, after the last meeting, which may be Litchfield and Warren, it might be July 20th, I'm not sure. Within 10 days, the new board of ed has to meet and get rolling. So is there a motion to approve this warning and the date and time?
I'll make the motion to approve it.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Now, how do you how do you get this out to people to get on, you know, they wanna put their name?
Oh, I think everybody knows.
Now then.
You think so?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Okay. We'll talk to ZBG or they'll just, we'll read your article. Get it out on Facebook, website. Maybe a little thing on the town sign. Get awareness. Can be a lot of work. Whoever gets it.
And I just took from you and already stole.
Anything else on the R20? I'm legally. Right?
That does not have a good ring to it. It sounds like something gross.
Appointments. We have a person interested in being our deputy fire marshal. He needs permission to be appointed and permission from us to attend fire marshal school. His name's Nathan Antonio. Dave Hart recommends him. He's looking forward to having a deputy. So you can go on vacations and not have to call in someone else. So do you add, oh, do you have this? If you want to pass. It's just nice to have someone that will do the job too. Speaking of that, Morris got called down from Milford for a mutual aid. Large structure fire on the third floor on Grove Street, possibly. As far as I can make it out. They're supposed to be standing by at Milford Fire. It's backup. A lot of departments are heading that way, so. Where were they?
So I'm making a motion to appoint Nathan.
Antonio.
Antonio.
Deputy Fire Marshal.
Yep.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Is there money in the budget for a deputy fire marshal?
The money in the budgets for inspections. So if Dave's not doing inspections and this guy does, it's
Just taking us.
That's the question.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Vacation more, so he probably could lose out anyway when he wants a day off or something. When he wants a day off or something. We have any correspondence? Did you have anything?
I have a couple people asked me on the ARPA money. Distributed to anybody?
Yes, uh, we only got the first uh bunch of it.
Yeah.
We did the mini excavator.
Yeah, I realized that.
Uh, we did the food shares.
Okay, how's that working out?
Good.
It started.
A few little kinks there, but Laurel's been handling it. It's working out great.
It's going well.
Good. And the food is, vegetables are great.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Everyone's happy.
Those guys are so nice.
Yeah, they really are.
Really nice people.
Uh, Northwest Transit District needed it uh to help cover some expenses, so they got theirs. Kind of holding off on the rest until we get, till we get the next bunch, which should be any day.
Okay, yeah, people just asked me and I said, I, I, I knew the excavator we bought. I didn't know about anything else and uh if your words comment, it just takes a little time.
Yeah.
Okay.
We want to make sure we had enough money in place before we move forward too quickly to help get the time timely ones done first.
Yep.
So. Uh, anything else? No? Motion?
I'll make a motion.
Bible one.
Second.
Hi.
Thank you.
All right, have a good evening.
Too.